Good evening and welcome to the Hingham Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday evening, February 6th. I'm going to be calling this meeting to order. Momentarily, the Board will take a vote to enter executive session. We anticipate that will last approximately 10 or 15 minutes, at which time we will return to open session to conclude the business portion of our meeting. Under the open meeting law, an executive session is available to discuss litigation and potential litigation under certain circumstances. For tonight's executive session, the purpose is to discuss litigation involving Juan Penn Florentine, who is now known as Ginger Siri Kenjachi. Holding this discussion in open session would have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town. So by roll call vote to enter executive session?
Aye.
Aye. And we will be, we will return to open session in approximately 15 minutes. Thank you. The Board of Selectmen is returning to open session at 7:20 PM. The next item on our agenda is the public hearing on the naming of public lands located off South Pleasant Street. Tom, are you presenting this article to us?
We do minutes or you want to do that at the end? We're going to do it at the end?
Oh, I beg your pardon. Okay. Why don't we just do minutes real quick?
I'll move the minute to January 16, 2018.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
On the minutes of January 30th, I had just one recommended suggestion on page two. There's reference to members of the Hingham who attended the Master Municipal Association meeting, and Emily Wentworth's name is omitted. So I would just ask that we include Emily Wentworth.
I approve the minutes of January 30th, 2018, as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll just, is there any public comment on items not on the agenda this evening? Okay, with that, thank you for catching that. We will now have the public hearing on the naming of public lands located off South Pleasant Street.
Sure.
So, will you be introducing this?
Yeah.
Okay.
So just to be clear, this is actually not the article discussion. This is the discussion, the public hearing to satisfy the naming bylaw, that Article 40, the naming bylaw for the public, the naming of public buildings and public lands that the town adopted some years past, I believe in 2010. So that art, that bylaw requires that the Board hold a public hearing to discuss and hear opinions on the appropriateness of the naming process, as well as the appropriateness of the design, specifically the specifications and standards for signs, plaques, markers, or other features to be erected on the public property. And that's the last page of your packet. So, this is more a public hearing merely than a review of the article. The article review will take place on February 13th, as Article U.
So, Tom, within, within this public hearing, the dis, are we to take a formal vote on this?
No.
Okay.
So this is, you're hearing the opinion of the public.
So this is a matter for us, this is a matter for us to do that. So before opening up to my colleagues for questions or comments, would you mind if I invite any members of the public who wish to comment?
No, okay.
Yes, so if there is anyone here who wishes to comment on the naming of the town, of the town land formerly owned by the Lehner family, and the, the proposal is that signage and this land be designated as the Lehner Conservation Area. So that is, that is what is proposed, that was proposed and voted unanimously by our Historical Commission in accordance with the bylaw Tom referenced.
Conservation.
Conservation, thank you. Is there anyone who'd like to be heard on this matter? Okay.
I can tell you Lonnie Fournier from the Conservation Commission is here if you wanted to ask about her process.
Lonnie, if I may, could I ask you to just come up to the microphone and just sort of describe the process that was undertaken? Thank you.
I'd also like to make you aware that Lori Freeman, the Chair of the Conservation Commission, is here with me tonight, so I'm going to pull her up front too. So this process started back in January. January 22nd, the Commission held a hearing on what to name the property. We voted that night, it was unanimous, and made the recommendation to the Board of Selectmen through Betty Foley for the process under Article 40 to continue. A legal ad was published for tonight's meeting in the Journal, and last night the Historical Commission met and voted as well to support the Lehner Conservation Area name. So as far as I can tell, everything has been followed to the letter for Article 40.
Thank you. And Lonnie, are you aware of any correspondence or any sort of input that we've received either in favor or in opposition to this naming?
No, nothing from the general public. Certainly, we had some internal discussions amongst the Boards on, you know, what might be better, or let's go that way. So there was some open dialogue, but in the end, we felt that Lehner Conservation Area, both the Commission and the Historical Commission, felt that it was an appropriate name for the property.
Terrific. Thank you so much to your work. And Lori, thank you and the Commission for advancing this. I think this is the first time that we've actually applied this particular bylaw to a process, and we appreciate your attention to the details and executing it the way the town meeting voted to adopt it. Paula, Karen, I know this is a chance for public comment, but in addition to being members of the Board of Selectmen, you're citizens as well, so I don't know if either of you have anything to add.
Not at this time, although I do like the idea of consistency with respect to signage. Durability is always an issue. There's a sign across from where I live that's in, I think, serious need of attention. It's, it's a wooden sign, and it's been there for a while now.
You know, as Mary said, this is, I think, our first time through this process, and I appreciate the work of both the Conservation Commission and the Historical Commission. You know, I think that that allows for, you know, sort of the full vetting of that name before it kind of gets to this level. I will say that I attended a meeting of the Land Conservation Trust this fall, and they thought it had already been named. So, you know, I, I think the name, as you suggest, continues to honor the Lehner family and to really honor the, the work of all of us in preserving open space in town. So I, I appreciate, I'm a process person, so I appreciate the methodical nature that both Commissions have undertaken here.
I would just add, I like the idea of consistency in signage because it kind of draws people's attention, and it helps recognize that, which, which is important. And similar to my colleagues, I think that the Lehner family has a rich heritage in Hingham. I think we had a circumstance last year where we were able to, to affect this transaction in a way that was beneficial to the Lehner family and the town, and we continue to be appreciative to the Lehner family for that. It seems appropriate and fitting, as well as institutionalizing what a lot of us call that land already. So it, it sort of passes the common sense test. So again, as Tom mentioned, this is a hearing in advance of the warrant articles, so this particular matter will also, it will be taken up by our Board within the next few weeks that will be posted, and the Advisory Committee will hear this and make a recommendation. So if anybody is watching this hearing from home, or watching it at a future point in time, and you wish to offer an opinion, there will be two additional public hearings prior to town meeting. Anything else? Okay. Our next item on the agenda is the appointment of police patrolmen. And Chief Olson, if you want to come up to the table, please. So last week, the Board had the opportunity to meet three candidates for police patrolman positions, and the Chief is here to offer a recommendation prior to the Board voting.
Good evening, everyone. It's always a pleasure to be here tonight and discuss the hiring of new candidates. The Hingham Police Department realizes the importance of hiring the most qualified candidates. We have developed a lengthy professional candidate review process. We have included three rated officers from other departments that bring an independent institutional value into the interview process to help provide a more balanced rating. The Town of Hingham has been blessed over the years and continues to be blessed by the, a group of well-rounded candidates for the job. Tonight, unfortunately, we can only use, we can only choose two, and I would, I would urge that the candidate not chosen to continue to strive and work and to improve their future standing. There'll be other opportunities, I'm sure. I'd like to recommend the following two candidates for conditional, a conditional offer of employment with the Hingham Police Department. Benjamin Carr was a high-scoring candidate with a 5.24, 5.24 score in top choice of the police interview panel. During both interviews, Mr. Carr was a very effective communicator. He was able to demonstrate his abilities to work with diverse groups and cultures. I believe that Mr. Carr also demonstrated that he shared the vision and the work skills needed to be a successful Hingham police officer, and I recommend him for hire. The second candidate is Mr. Campanelli. He scored second overall with a score of 4.0 from the police interview panel. During both interviews, he gave thoughtful, complete answers. He showed empathy when talking about community issues such as opioid and mental health, and then how they affect the overall condition of the community. He's taken many steps to prepare himself for the job. I share the panel's view that Mr. Campanelli understands the importance of balancing family, a family life with the commitments of a law enforcement career. I am confident that Mr. Campanelli will be a positive attribute to the Hingham Police Department and recommend him for hire.
Thank you. Paula, Karen, any comments?
First.
Yeah, because I find this to be, you know, one of the most important and also one of the most difficult tasks that we undertake on the Board of Selectmen. And like the Chief, I really appreciated the, the diversity and the preparedness of all three gentlemen that we were able to speak to last week. I reviewed my notes from that, I reviewed all of the background materials and the resumes, I reviewed the post-panel results, and as well as all the background materials that Deputy Jones provided us with. And I would concur with the, with the Chief's recommendations tonight.
Where are they? I, I consider this to be perhaps one of the most important decisions I make as a Selectman serving this town, because we're, we're tasked with making a judgment where we appoint men or women that, under certain circumstances, can take the life of another human being. I was impressed with Mr. Campanelli and Mr. Carr, as well as Mr. Thomas. I enjoyed seeing their progression and the steps that they took to become police officers here in the Town of Hingham. I will confess that they were far more advanced along that path than I was when I became a police officer. It's my hope that Mr. Carr and Mr. Campanelli, as they become more, become mature officers, will regard each other as their closest friends on the job. When I got on the job, as I refer to it, I came on with Mike Perino and Mark Gillespie, and remain close friends with them today. So I concur with your judgment, Chief. And Deputy, I think you guys did a great job on this. We've got some great talent to pick from. The town is fortunate that people with these kind of qualifications want to step forward and literally put their lives on the line if need be.
I would just add, add two points. The first one is that in, in the three years since I've had the honor of serving on the Board, I think this is the fifth or sixth time that we've had the opportunity to appoint officers. And so this is an ongoing process, and we always have more qualified candidates than available positions, and always encourage anyone who is not selected to follow through and stay in touch. And Chief and Deputy, I always ask you, in particular, to follow up with individuals and give, give them a little bit of coaching and feedback on how to enhance their candidacy for future considerations. So I, I hope that you will do that. I would just also mention that as, as someone who, in my professional world, helps with selection and talent identification processes, I think this is a really solid buttoned-up process. It has a quantitative aspect, a qualitative aspect, there are criteria against which all candidates are evaluated. I like the idea of having the panel include people from outside Hingham. That's a very, very helpful perspective, especially, in this case, we had three candidates from Hingham, and I think it just, it just kind of helps. So I, I really do think that this is a very buttoned-up process, and as a result of that, I would also concur with, with the recommendation. So with that, would, Paul, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, thank you. I move that we vote to extend a conditional offer of employment to Benjamin Carr and Derek Campanelli as permanent police officers for the Town of Hingham. This officer, this office, offer is contingent upon the successful passing of all required medical and psychological screening examinations and all other requirements related to, but not necessarily limited to the following. A, successful passing of the required medical examination. B, successful passing of the required physical abilities test. C, successful passing of the required psychological screening process. D, successful passing of all other requirement for entrance into the police academy. E, entering into a satisfactory agreement with the town relative to payment up to $4,600 recruit training fee. F, successful completion of the police academy as determined by the police chief. G, any and all other requirements is mandated by law or regulation. Should the candidates fail to successfully complete all of these conditions, as determined in the sole discretion of the town, then this conditional appointment shall be considered null and void, and to the extent necessary, any offer of employment shall be considered rescinded.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Campanelli and Mr. Carr.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
We have, this evening, we have some warrant articles scheduled, and I would just point out for the audience, if anyone is here, Articles R and Article Z will not be heard tonight. They are not ready. So our first, our first article is Article P, which are funds for purchase of a fire aerial apparatus, otherwise known as a replacement for the Quint. So, Tom?
So I've asked Deputy Chief Murphy to attend tonight's meeting to explain, we have some quotes for the cost of the vehicle, and to explain the anticipated funding plan for the vehicle.
Welcome.
Hi.
Hello.
Thank you. I have the Fire Department Master Mechanic, firefighter Michael Cross, with me here as well.
Welcome.
Michael was one of five people that we had on a committee that has been researching this for about a year and a half now, to, so to step back and give you a little history, this was originally intended to be on the replacement schedule for last year. We were not ready to make a recommendation on what we felt would serve the Department at that time, so we actually went to Capitol and asked for it to be pushed off for a year so that we could spend a little bit more time researching what we felt was the best need for the Town of Hingham. We have done that extensively. We've spent a great number of hours researching, going to other places that have similar vehicles, all that stuff. Michael was involved in it, and he has been recently kind of the liaison between some of the different vendors on pricing and options and stuff like that. So to explain the process a little bit as well, whenever you're dealing with buying any type of a fire truck like this, or a ladder truck, it's very much to your order, okay? Everything is customizable. So it's not like you go to the store and you say, "I want to buy this one." It's literally weeks and weeks of going over plans and everything else with the vendors, and saying, "No, I want this with this," and all that type of stuff. So it's a very detailed plan, very detailed process. What we are recommending is a change of the type of vehicle that we currently have. You've seen the Quint right now, it's a ladder truck, okay, which just says ladder on it. It's also got one rear axle on it, okay? And it's what we considered, it was low-ridden down in a sense that the suspension was dropped down, because at the time that that truck was purchased, it originally started to inspect out in 1997. It was purchased in 1998, 99, and it had to fit into the old fire station. We do not have that restriction anymore. We don't have a weight restriction or anything else, so it kind of opened up what we could look at and feel, or and find the best option for the Town of Hingham. So we have two vehicles that we still haven't selected between the specific vendors, but they're very, very similar between what we're looking at. But again, it would be a longer truck, a little bit bigger, and it's going to have what we call a tower basket on the front of the truck, which, from the fire perspective, is going to be much safer for our guys to operate from. It will allow them to, instead of climbing up the end of the ladder and going onto a roof of a building, or into a window, or anything else, then they can stay safely inside the basket, more people can work together, they can bring tools up with them, everything else. It's, it's, it's a nice option, and it's something that we've seen many other towns going to the same type of thing. Hanover just specifically, or just had one delivered just a few months ago. Abington had one delivered. It's, the trend is going towards that. So we are asking for this one vehicle. The cost on it is coming in at about, the vehicle alone is about 1.3 plus, depending upon, because again, we have to understand that we're dealing with numbers that, you know, are a year out or anything else, because this, this will actually take about 10 months to a year to physically build, once we say, "Go ahead and start building it." So our numbers without equipment and everything else that needs to go on it is in the 1.3 range. We feel that the final number is probably going to be between 1.45, I'm sorry, yeah, 1.45 and 1.5. So I believe the number that we're asking on, in this is 1.5. We think that it's probably going to come in under that, but we aren't 100% certain because we don't know what we're going to get for trade-in value. We also don't know on equipment that we're ordering two years in advance on any increases in costs or anything else. So we feel that that's the safe number to go for, so. And Mike, if you want to explain anything else?
That pretty much sums, sums everything all up. That's, that's it.
Questions?
Deputy, I take it that this piece of equipment will be adequate to fight a fire on a structure the size of what's being constructed down at the shipyard?
Yes.
Okay.
It will be.
And is there a projected lifespan on a piece of equipment of this nature?
It's hard to say. When the Quint was initially purchased, we were looking at that as being about a 20-year lifespan.
Okay, almost there.
We're almost there. That's why this has been kind of on the, you know, anticipated docket for a little bit. But it's also something that, remember, that truck was kind of modified a little bit. So, you know, we're hoping that we can potentially get a little bit longer than that, and maybe get 25 years out of it, is what, you know, is kind of recommended. But again, it's, you know, when you, when you modify the truck, like the single rear axle, it puts more strain on that, and there's more wear and tear, whereas the dual rear axle will spread the...
Is that what you're getting?
Yes.
A dual?
Yeah.
How much heavier is that?
For, for weight-wise and everything else, we have to go with that. What was your question?
How much heavier is that?
30,000.
As opposed to what?
The, the current Quint weighs in at about 52,000 loaded with water. This truck will come in at about 82,000 loaded with water. And it's about seven feet longer, so.
Did, not to sound stupid, but do you steer it from the back, or is it all?
No. It's not a tiller. We wanted one, but it's not a tiller. It's, it's drive from the front.
Some of the guys in the committee would have agreed that that's what they wanted, but no, we weren't going to go there.
I don't want to start trouble, yeah.
To, to give you a little bit more of a description of it too, it does have the tower, which the, you know, that's the biggest thing that people will see is different, and the size, you know, is going to look a lot bigger. It's a heavier, heavier, higher truck, because it, you know, like I said, we had the restrictions beforehand. But this is also technically a Quint, okay, which means that the old truck had the ability to be a ladder truck, and it had the ability to have a pump on it, and there's water on the truck, and then hose, which is, so in other words, a fire engine has three abilities. It has hose to go to the hydrant, it has hose to go to the building, it has a pump on it, and it has water. This truck will have all of that, and the ladder, and the tower, and everything else. So we are building it. It won't, it wouldn't be primarily used as the pump itself, but it is a feature that, you know, is available just as the Quint is now. So we're not losing anything, we're gaining a lot more from this purchase.
Is the Department going to keep the existing ladder?
We've talked a lot about that, and, no.
Thank you.
There's a few different reasons that we're not. One is that it's getting to the end of its lifespan, you know, and if you remember, or remember a few years ago...
Put a transmission in that, though?
Not a transmission.
We did, we did a lot of aerial maintenance itself.
Yes.
So we spent about, I want to say, I think the number was somewhere around 80,000 to 90,000 on aerial maintenance itself. So the chassis itself is where the concern becomes now, where, you know, by the time a truck, by the time this truck is done, if it is approved, the Quint will be 21 years old, almost 22 years old. We've been maintenance-ing the chassis as, as much as we can, we've been staying on top of it as best we can, but it still will be a 22-year-old chassis.
You mean like a fracture in the frame or something?
Yeah, the truck's not, it's not there, but it's a lot of mileage, almost 100,000, which I know doesn't sound like a lot, but, you know, and when it comes to equipment like this, you don't necessarily look at mileage, you look more at hours. Our concern is how, is idle hours, pump hours, those all down the line equate to mileage. So that's where the concern with it is, so.
There was, there was other things that we talked about as well. Trucks like this don't usually like to be sat and not used, you know, and so that's a concern that if we, first of all, we'd have to find a space for it. We don't have any place to keep it in any of the stations as they currently are and all that stuff, so we wouldn't be able to store it anyplace. You don't want to leave a truck like this outside. And then if it's not getting used, it, the mechanicals, issues really start to creep up, you know, and so we kind of looked at it and said, "It would be nice to have it as a spare, but for all of the concerns and the money that we may have to spend on it, we don't necessarily know that it was really the right option to, to look to keep it," you know?
Does it have a trade-in, Dan?
We don't know that. We assume some, but we don't know what that is. Now, you also have to remember, this is a 20-year-old vehicle that was purchased new for $500,000, you know, so we anticipate that we're going to get some, but we haven't had it actually looked at by the manufacturers. We're guessing a high mark might be 70, you know, 75,000. But we, again, we can't really get a price on it this far into, this far in the process because, you know, something could happen, and then all of a sudden, that truck is no longer worth it, you know, two years from now, when we're looking to trade it in. So, but, so we're budgeting all of that into this, so our numbers, we're actually using a $5,000 trade-in value for it. We're assuming that, you know, that's worst-case scenario. We're hoping that obviously we get a lot better than that, so.
What's the manufacturer?
The, that, that current truck is a Seagrave. We're looking at either a Seagrave or a Pierce, which is what the new engines that we just bought. And we had a, we've had good relationships with both companies.
Yes.
So like I said, even though we spent a year, probably over a year now, doing the research on this, we still haven't come down to a final number yet. We have spent, or we have bids on both companies and all that stuff, and, you know, we just kind of, they're very, very close.
Very, very close, very close, yeah.
Yeah.
Karen?
So Paul took all my questions.
Sorry about that, Karen.
No, good work. Anecdotally, have you heard from Hanover, Abington, on how satisfied they are with the, the fire trucks that they have?
We have. We've actually gone to, how many different trips?
We went to Abington.
You guys did about four different trips or something to different stations to look at different vehicles. Abington was one of them. Hanover wasn't, because they just took delivery of the truck just recently.
Okay.
And so we, our process was a few months ago when we were going out there, but some of our guys since then have gone to Hanover and looked at it, but that wasn't part of this process.
Okay. And it sounds like there's an ability to customize these trucks, so there may be some attributes that Hanover, Abington have that we may or may not want to...
Yes, which we actually did. Corrected some good ideas from some of the different departments we went to.
Okay. And the $500,000, is that coming out of your capital outlay allocation? Is that where that, where is that? So this is just a separate warrant article?
Be a borrowing, probably.
A borrowing, okay. So this sort of goes back and forth, I guess, with what you said about these trucks not liking to sit. You know, sometimes, sometimes we get phone calls when you guys are out doing your job, and all of a sudden, this really big fire truck shows up at what might not be like a really big fire truck-type job. So, you know, to me, I look at the capital asset, and I think, well, gee, wouldn't, is there a way to think about, you know, maybe reducing wear and tear? there a way to think about, you know, maybe reducing wear and tear?" But it sounds like you, you have to run these trucks as well.
Sometimes you do. These are all diesel engines, and as, you know, the mechanics will tell you that diesel engines like to be run sometimes, you know, a little different than a gasoline engine. Where sitting and idling for a gas engine is not good...
Yep.
For a diesel engine, it is.
Yeah, yeah, and the same thing with the pump and the hydraulics, when it comes to the ladder anyways, you know, we exercise it every Monday, the pumps are exercised every Monday. There's a lot of O-rings in there, all that stuff will dry up, the levers get, you know, they bind up and whatnot. I mean, they, they're, they're made to use. They're, they're made to be exercised, to take out, you know, kind of beat up a little bit. That's, that's what they're designed for. So, to let them sit for an extended period of time, it's more detrimental to the piece of equipment that it really is worth. It's, it's unfortunate, but it's, they're just, they're made to be used.
That's the nature of the truck. And just circling back to Paul's question about the shipyard, then, in, in terms of what you understand for residential growth in Hingham and the structures that are anticipated, both the Brio Building as well as the Alliance Building, this is the truck that can service those safety needs?
And like I said, that's why we deferred it a year ago, because we didn't have the answer at that time that we felt we were comfortable coming forward with. Since then, we've done a lot of research, looking at different options and everything else. I actually wrote a 30-page paper for the Fire Academy for a class that I was in specifically on this topic.
Wow. We don't have that in our package.
But yeah, so we, we've looked at a lot of different options, and we really feel that this is the right truck for what we're looking for.
Appreciate it, and I appreciate all that work as well.
I just, two things. One, I, I just want to mention for, you know, Steve, you, you mentioned that this truck costs a million dollars, but I would just point out to the audience that the warrant article is actually only going to seek half a million dollars. And people may remember last year that when the Avalon project was being considered, the selectmen at the time voted to enter into a development agreement, and one aspect of that development agreement was that the, that the Avalon Corporation gave the town $1 million towards the purchase of this vehicle. We felt at the time that this was an asset that was needed. We thought it was important that, that this particular piece of apparatus be able to, be able to adequately put out a fire at that building, and that money had been transferred. So, in a sense here, the town is getting an asset worth 1.5 million dollars for about a million dollars. I would also...
Five hundred, five hundred thousand.
Five hundred thousand, excuse me. I would also just suggest that at town meeting, I would bring a picture of the truck and put it up on, in front of town meeting, because I think, because everybody likes it. People are going to want to know what it looks like, and I think, I think a picture's worth a thousand words, and it'll, it'll, it'll help. I'd also just point out that because this is most likely going to be a borrowing article, because this is an asset that'll have a 20-year life, and we like to borrow, we like to borrow for those types, this will require a two-thirds vote at town meeting. So, again, that's, that's the advisory's job with the recommended motion, but, anything else? Any questions from the public on this? Okay, do you want to make a motion?
Sure. Where's my vote list? I move that we recommend favorable action on Article P, funds for the purchase of a fire aerial apparatus.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Thank you so much, both of you. Michael, thank you for all the great work on this.
Thank you.
Okay, our next, we've got two articles before we start with the school committee at eight o'clock. Article Y, which is the adoption of the Stretch Energy Code, feels like we were just talking about this article a couple of weeks ago. We actually voted to insert this into the warrant, but this is our warrant article hearing, and Mr. Moyer from the Energy Action Committee was gracious enough to come. Thank you, Brad. In the event that anybody in the audience had questions about this, we thought it would be important. Do any of my colleagues have questions about this?
I think I got the gist.
I got the gist as well.
Is there anyone in the audience who has a question or wishes to make a comment on the Stretch Energy Code? Brad, before we vote on this, I did just want to mention kind of procedurally that, while this is something that the board of selectmen inserted into the, into the warrant, we're really looking to the Energy Action Committee to shepherd this through the process. So, we would look to your committee to attend the warrant article hearing with the advisory committee, to review the advisory committee comment, and any kind of input when it comes to town meeting and thinking about, you know, having prepared remarks for town meetings, consideration and things. Again, we're really going to look, look for you to kind of take the ball and run with it on this. Obviously, our office can, you know, answer questions, provide guidance. Please continue to use Tom in that regard, but we, we think that you're best able to really navigate this through the town meeting process and, and talk to it at town meeting. Terrific. All right, with that, do we want to make a motion?
Move to recommend favorable action on Article Y.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Our last warrant article of the evening, and welcome to members of the Community Preservation Committee. Last week, we had a great presentation and a lot of great material on the recommended community preservation projects. In particular, Carol and Jim and Carol, it was really helpful to get a lot of the great detail on the pool project. I think that one's getting, you know, a lot of different attention, and I also appreciated the way that the presentation upfront kind of gave some perspective about CPC, where the dollars have been spent, and then, you know, really, pretty concisely kind of walked through every project and highlighted it. So, again, hopefully, that's going to serve you well for going to town meeting. Do either of my colleagues have any questions or comments about the projects being recommended by CPC?
I had one. So, I exchanged some emails today, I think you may have seen them as well, with Ms. Piles and Mr. Conroy with respect to the gift agreement language that would accompany any grant made to the country club with respect to the pool project. You might recall that last time around, in addition to the, the capital plan, I was, I was concerned that somebody sign off as well on the, on the operating budget that would be proposed by the country club pool, and I think Mr. Conroy was drafting some language that he, you shared with me earlier today. So, you know, I think consistent with those expectations, I, I have no other questions about, about the projects.
I have nothing to add, although I'm delighted to see the Canterbury Street Playground is getting a bit of a facelift, and I'm happy that the bells are being maintained and serviced, so.
When the clocks are done, we start on the bells.
There you go.
Carol or Jim or Carol, and any comments from CPC? And if so, could I ask you to just come up to the microphone so that the viewing audience can hear your remarks?
Carol Pile, CPC. What were your questions? What did you want to tell us?
I don't, I don't think we...
So, I guess, the language that you sent me today, the intent would be to incorporate something along those lines into the grant agreement with the country club, right?
Great. I think, I think other than that...
Do you all have copies, or you all have seen it?
I, I can share it with them.
Yeah, we're good. Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who had a question or wanted to make a comment on the community preservation article before the board voted that? Okay, if not, I'd recommend favorable action on Article Q, as presented by the Community Preservation Committee.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Terrific. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have three minutes before our joint hearing is beginning, so I don't know...
Do you have an appointment to make?
Okay, we have an appointment. Karen, is this you?
Yep.
Okay.
I, I spoke with Mackenzie Pratt today, and he is willing to serve as the alternate member, alternate architect member of the Historic Districts Commission. So, with that, I'd move to appoint Mackenzie Pratt as an alternate, alternate member, filling the architecture seat of the Historic Districts Commission for a term ending June 30, 2020.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Terrific. And Tom, the office will send a note out to Mr. Pratt and giving him all the information.
It'll be sent, sent out tomorrow.
Terrific. I think the advisory committee is just starting to come in, but maybe while we have a few moments, Tom, did you have anything from Town Administrator Report?
Sure. A couple of things. Just about a month or two ago, we had started talking about a United States Army Corps of Engineers study being done over at Bear Cove Park regarding unexploded ordinance review within the park, and that was at the time going to be taken up, maybe more than a month or two ago. At the time, the site work was anticipated to begin in the fall, in November or so. That didn't happen for several reasons on the Corps' part, as they were investigating new methods for doing some of their work. However, that, the conversations have started back up again. We're anticipating a public hearing sometime towards the end of March to explain their process for, for those site investigations that will take place. The work, the, the investigation will begin, like metal detecting work will begin in, in April, and with the actual site work likely taking place in May or June. And then, the last thing I want to let everyone know is that on February 22nd, we'll be holding a public information meeting in Town Hall regarding the MBTA's plans for some potential solar canopies at the Nantaska Junction and West Hingham MBTA parking lots. So, if you have any interest in that conversation, that'll be taking place here in Central North and South on February 22nd.
Tom, could you, with both of those hearings, could you make sure that, I know they typically go up on the events calendar, but if they can also be sent out in sort of an email announcement to people who sign up for those alerts?
Sure.
I think it might be great. And Carol, if, if the Journal could, could post those, we're happy to provide any information that you need, but it'll be helpful to get the word out on those. Terrific. Thank you very much.
And Historic Districts Commission, I think, has commented on the solar canopies as well.
Yeah, yes, they have.
At least with respect to one.
Yeah, so, so the one place that where the municipality and the state have some, have some authority regarding permitting for projects like this with an entity like the MBTA is through the Mass Historic District and Historical Commission, and that, that board, that entity requested insight from our local historic board, and it was, it was provided.
Yep.
Our, our local permitting authorities, both our ZBA staff and our planning staff and our Historic District staff, actually, have all, and myself, have worked together to prepare some comments that we would normally review, require as if it was, as though it were a local permitted project. We can't enforce a lot of that because they're, the MBTA is exempt from all local zoning requirements, with the exception of the Historic District and from the Massachusetts Historic Commission, so. But we're going to hold a public meeting, we're going to ask them to do some things, and we'll see the kind of response we get.
Well, I, I thought that the Historic District Commission comments, in any event, were, were very comprehensive and I think protective of that, of that area, so.
Andrew Young did a great job.
Yep.
I think what I'll do is I'll hold off on selectmen reports until, until the conclusion of the meeting. So, before we begin with the, with the joint session with the advisory committee, we do have one, one quick item of business that affects the school department, and that is the statement of interest for the Massachusetts School Building Association, MSBA or Foster Schools. So, Linda?
Hi, I'm Linda Hill. I'm here on behalf of the Foster School Building Committee. I have Ray Estes here as well.
Hi, Ray, welcome.
As I know you all are aware, in December, we received a letter from the MSBA letting us know that we were not selected for this upcoming year to participate in the process. But we were strongly encouraged to resubmit the, our statement of interest, and in order to do that, we have to electronically submit an application, submit a hard copy, we have to have the votes, again, of school committee and the selectmen like we did last year, have that certified by the town clerk. So, we're here asking you tonight to just re-vote on it so we can submit that application. The process opened January 1st. School committee has taken their vote, and as soon as we get your vote, we will submit. The application's relatively the same. We'll add a couple of things, because we did a lot of work over the summer preparing for this winter. Our committee had work done by ParCorp on some site feasibility study that we'll include with the application, but otherwise, everything's pretty much the same.
And we have been...
And I gave you the language that will eventually have to be certified by the town clerk.
Paula, Karen, any questions?
Nope, well done.
I'd like to get some idea what's going on over there, and I have none presently,
I can give you some, I can give you information of what was done this summer if you want. I can tell you what's been done so far this winter and December when we had a heating problem and how they're accommodating that now. I can go into as much detail as you like.
When's the deadline to submit this?
March. April 6th. April 6th.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like a little more time on this. I want to go through this with the man here.
Okay, and Paul, just so that we're, so that I'm, I'm clear, in terms of the time, which happy to do, and is, is it in terms of the, the grant application process?
No, I want some more facts about what's going on over there and what you found and where you're heading and...
Well, I, we can answer any questions you have right now. It'll take just a few minutes.
I need more than a few minutes, Ray.
All right. So, so we will do that, and I...
Thank you.
What I'm going to suggest, Tom and I are meeting later this week to look at the agendas for the next four or five weeks, which seem to be shifting a little bit every day. So, my suggestion is that we'll put that up, we'll put that up on agenda, find a convenient time when you could please come back. What I'd also suggest, Paul, is that if there are specific questions that you have, you know, if you can give those to Tom and Tom can forward them to Linda and to Ray, you know, it might make sense for you to sit down, but that way, we can just kind of keep moving ahead and be mindful, mindful of the deadline.
Yeah, because I mean, I'm sure, I know we don't have time on the agenda tonight, but I'm sure I have answers to all your questions for what we've done, what the committee's done up until this point, what we're going to be doing in the meantime, and then other work that's been done at Foster School.
Okay, great.
I did go online and, you know, take a look at some of your minutes. You, I think, out of the box, we're working diligently toward the submittal of the initial application, and I think the, the resubmittal of, of this application, and, you know, I was certainly gratified to learn through Dot and through Mary that, you know, we have been encouraged, we have been encouraged to, to, to reapply, so.
And appreciate the work that the building committee is doing to keep this moving ahead, even though Hingham was not chosen. There's still, you know, work to be done, both on the site, and I understand a little bit with the enrollment studies. So, I think that, that work will just better prepare us, and it'll be very helpful, so.
Can I, can I just ask, then, if we, if we delay, it, we'll, we'll obviously be in ahead of the deadline, but, you know, is it like that rule in college admission where you really want to be in, in the front of the pack, or do you have some sense of that? Is there any detriment to the delay, is all I want to know?
It won't matter, no. It won't matter. Because I think we can still submit the electronic application. It's, it's the paper one that's not going to be complete until we do the hard copy that you've all signed off on and that we have the verification. So, we can still start the process on our end, and if we can't move forward, we can't move forward, but...
Right, we can, right.
Sure, John, thank you.
John Ferris, Director of Business and Support Services for the school department. We can, we will, I get access to the MSBA, to the SOI, and I can refresh that application and pull it off as a draft before we submit it, you know, which will have all the updates that we've done over the past year, the land survey that we, we did, and provide you with a full set of documentation. It really won't matter. Last year, we got it in right at the deadline. They wait till all the applications get in, and then everybody has a fair shake at it. You know, we just don't want to rush, though. The last time, it was running down to the post office at the last second, so to the extent we can even get it a couple of weeks before the deadline, that would be excellent. Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, great, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, the next item on our agenda, and this is, this will actually, this is our last item on the agenda. This is an annual joint session that we are having with the advisory and the school committee on the school budget presentation. So, let's see. Lucy and Donna, I don't know, do you want to join over here? And Liza and Aileen? I know there are going to be a couple of presentations. Dot, are you presenting first?
No, Liza.
Okay, all right. At this point, I'm going to, Lucy, are you in session? Do you need to?
We are still in session.
You are still in session. Liza, do you need to call your group?
We're in session.
Okay. I think I will hand this over to you and to Dot.
Thanks, John. Thanks, John.
Sure, if I could ask everybody who's at a microphone at the table to speak up, and for those of you in the back, if you're having trouble hearing, kind of, please give us a wave and we'll adjust.
Also, the screen on the back is...
Thank you for inviting the school committee to share an overview of the Hingham Public Schools. I am Liza O'Reilly, as chair. I am speaking on behalf of my six fellow school committee members, many of whom are joining me here tonight. As you are aware, the school budgets consistently increase at a higher rate than 2.5% each year due to several factors: enrollments, state mandates, student needs, contractual commitments, and other inflationary costs. In order to manage this challenge, the school committee and school administration have been working together on a five-year financial vision to help communicate these issues and open a dialogue with the community on how to address these challenges and understand what is ahead for the Hingham Public Schools. Please be aware that this five-year vision does not include any dollar values, because we always do our best with the funds made available, and certain initiatives will be accomplished by simply doing things differently rather than requiring additional investment. Our guiding principles for this five-year vision are the established vision, mission, and core values of the Hingham Public Schools. In 2016, an updated five-year strategic plan was developed by the staff with input from the school committee, parents, and students. The fifth goal of ensuring sustainable resources is the responsibility of the school committee and the driver of this effort. When looking out five years, it is important to acknowledge the many successes of the Hingham Public Schools as our foundation. We then considered challenges ahead, opportunities for improvement and innovation, as well as the state requirements that must be fulfilled. This led us to ask the question, how do the Hingham Public Schools sustain, continue developing, and explore opportunities to innovate today and in the future? As background and our foundation, allow me to share some basic facts about the schools. The school committee is the elected body overseeing the schools. We have a strong leadership team for our administration and a dedicated and enthusiastic staff of 683 members. As of this school year, we are responsible for educating 4,354 students in the district and the out-of-district programs for special education and vocational students. We have experienced an increase of more than 500 students in the past 10 years. The peak population bubble is beginning to enter the high school for the next few years, while our middle school and elementary school populations remain fairly stable after these peak years. Along with educating students, the school department is responsible for managing and maintaining an extensive portfolio of buildings and operations. Hingham Public Schools must comply with numerous mandates and requirements from the federal and state governments and their education, public health, and other departments. A few key issues that we are facing include, in Massachusetts, the elementary and secondary education department named a new commissioner just last week or so, so we await the impact of that appointment. MCAS standardized tests have been updated the past few years, which have imposed demands on all staff and adjustments by the students, and now, we are required to administer these tests on electronic devices. In addition, curriculum standards have been under review, expanded, and updated frequently in the past few years, requiring increased professional development, new curriculum materials and textbooks, and time and resources to adapt. In addition, government actions or inactions directly impact the operations of the schools. Funding has been challenging, with state contributions not keeping pace with the cost increases faced by municipalities. Recommendations to change the state funding formula have fallen on deaf ears on Beacon Hill, and reimbursement accounts are not always fully funded, leaving the towns to cover the state's obligations. We are also bracing for impacts of changes in federal budgets, especially with Title I and special education grants. The schools also must meet mandates from the Department of Public Health, such as requirements for our school nurses and programs to help address the opioid crisis. And the Freedom of Records Act has impacted the school staff with compliance requirements, just as it has the town. Plus, we keep a watch on future events, such as 2018 ballot initiatives, which may benefit us or impact us. Now, let's take a look at where we are with our budget. This current year, the school budget is just under $50 million and just under half of the town budget. On average, this is consistent over time. We have been a partner with the town in determining this budget despite the variability of state education funds. In tracking our budgets, we continuously conduct extensive research on how we compare to our benchmark towns. We evaluate the programs offered, the success and achievement gaps of our students, staffing levels and budgets. We consider these comparisons as true benchmarks, because every town is different, and each town may even report their information differently to the state. But one keynote is that Hingham has consistently posted the lowest per pupil spend of all 20 benchmark towns that we measure ourselves against. We note this because it demonstrates that we are not overspenders. We also share that there are different interpretations of having the lowest per pupil spend. From one group of Hingham taxpayers, this means we are getting a great bang for our buck, but from others, we hear we need to spend more because our children can and should This brings us all to the development of the five-year financial vision. As we look at the Hingham Public Schools, we see a complex and large organization which has a valuable and important role in our community, to provide an education to our youngest children and prepare them to be good citizens. To communicate all of our thoughts, we looked at the programs to sustain, continue to develop, and to innovate and explore further. We also considered the timing to accomplish them. This effort resulted in a grid, that's what we call it, which you have in front of you, and there are copies available for others. I will note that this grid, this presentation, as well as additional background information for this presentation, will all be posted on the Hingham Schools website, under the school committee and budget information pages of the website, and I will also email them to all the boards for your reference after the meeting. I'm just going to highlight a few of the items on this grid. I'm not going to go into all of them. So I will begin with the sustain row, which we consider maintaining level services or what we have today. Hingham has a broad and strong educational curriculum and program that we do not want to reduce. Unfortunately, we are seeing some achievement gaps for our higher-needs students compared to other communities. It is important that we provide a program that supports all of our students to succeed to the best of their individual abilities, and we want to close those gaps. Foster School, as we heard earlier, is our highest facility priority, and together with the town, we are beginning to address that challenge. Class sizes should be maintained, as we continue to face growing enrollment in the high school, as well as a changing student population, which requires additional supports. You have all heard about rising student anxiety and student behavior issues from across the country, and Hingham has similar challenges. Continuing along the sustain row, in the next two years, Hingham Public Schools will experience a few key retirements, and new leadership will be in place. As part of this transition, we recognize that the central office administrative staff is under pressure to do more with less, and we have identified that professional human resources staff would be an efficient and effective addition. This is a key common role for a district of our size and scope. We have also recently concluded a social and emotional survey of students, parents, and staff to help us develop a comprehensive tiered system of support. Our staffing ratios of counselors and adjustment counselors are high, and survey results indicate that there are needs to fulfill. And looking forward to the next three to four years, we do anticipate enrolling new students living in the new 40B developments and/or new families moving into homes that empty nesters relocate to these developments or the expanded Linden Ponds. On the blue row of continuing development, these are areas where our current program is changing due to societal changes, state requirements, or other evolutions in the Hingham Public Schools. One key challenge for us is the expanded use of social media over the past few years. This has required the schools to change and adapt how we communicate, and it requires more immediacy to react, a variety of platforms to manage, and more time to prepare communications. Also, Hingham Schools are impacted by all of the societal and population changes that you hear about in other communities, and we are responsible for educating all of these children. One example of this are English-language learners. No matter how many we have, we have to educate those students. As I also mentioned, the social and emotional learning survey, these results will not only impact staffing levels, but also the curriculum we offer and professional development for teachers to support the efforts and the students. And digital literacy is now a required subject for us to teach. This means that our students will learn computer coding, app development, and more during the school day. Hingham is actually taking a leadership role in this effort, thanks to the innovative vision of our staff and the generous support of the Hingham Education Foundation. We are fortunate that HEF is committed to providing the startup funds for materials and professional development support, with the objective of creating a sustainable program. Moving out a few years on our continuing development, a key goal is to work with all of you and the town to fund a sustainable operating budget. This will be the key to maintaining what we are required to implement and what we want to do, but it will require all of us to work together to achieve. And finally, the bottom row outlines the opportunities to innovate and explore, which don't necessarily require significant investment, but mean we will be doing things differently. I referenced the digital literacy curriculum implementation required by the state. We see that happening by integrating the requirements into the current curriculum. For example, history students could create an app to explain the exploration of the Oregon Trail, or another app of the Bill of Rights and how to use it in everyday life. We're not just adding more time in another class on top of what we already have to do. The past year, the school committee has been addressing changes to our special education program as initiated by the staff and other issues brought to our attention by parents. This will remain a focus as we all strive for continuous improvements across the district. In addition, our younger special education population is growing, and their needs are greater. This may result in additional staffing to service them as they matriculate through the system. And also, technology is ever-evolving, and we have to keep on top of what makes sense for our students, teachers, and budgets. And finally, looking out a few years, three years ago, Hingham offered full-day kindergarten. We finally had the physical classroom space to offer the program to any family that wanted to participate by implementing a tuition-based program with a sliding scale rate based on income. Funding full-day kindergarten is not currently required by state law. However, a wide majority of towns do offer free full-day kindergarten, and a wide range of educational benefits have been identified for students, especially considering the higher standards imposed by the Massachusetts Department of Education. So how does Hingham move forward with offering this educational program that requires an additional $800,000 to the operating budget? Something we'll all have to think about. So finally, as you can see, there's a lot on our plate, lots of great achievements and many challenges ahead. We hope this presentation provides a brief overview of what we have going for the long run and looking forward. So I will now pass it on to Dr. Dorothy Gallo, who's the superintendent of Hingham Public Schools, to share with you the school department's request for the immediate next year and the fiscal '19 budget. And we can take questions after Dr. Gallo has finished her presentation.
Thank you, Liza.
Thank you, Liza.
I'd offer to help without doing any good.
Looks like we better beef up the IT department, eh?
Want to do our reports while we're waiting? Got it?
Dot, when you're up there and it's not coming up on the screen, to us, that was about 45 seconds, and I'm sure to you it felt like about 10 minutes.
I was counting those seconds as well. So, good evening, everyone. So those of you who are members of the boards have this PowerPoint presentation. Many of the slides are some that many of you have seen before, but there are some new slides. If you're in the audience, there is a handout that has the two most important pages. It's in the back, and the handout has the actual budget proposal and then the new items. And we'll talk to that, but you have that, and it's large enough for you to see, which it may not be here. So just some comments and challenges. I'll go through these quickly because we've seen them before. They were in the budget message as well. Special ed is up 6.63 percent. The net tuitions are down because our circuit break of reimbursement is up this year. The teacher account under special ed is up because we have proposed three additional teachers and some added para hours. State and federal aid, we're thinking is going to be pretty level. The governor's budget is up a bit, and that's a good thing, but we don't look for any meaningful aid. We are concerned, as the future goes on, about what's going to happen with respect to federal grants. We lost a couple smaller ones, but the big ones are still there. But for the future, something to watch. We have very few retirements at this point, two actual confirmed and three that are possible. Very small number, and we count on those retirements and the turnover in salaries that that generates to be able to do some things that we need to do that the town may not be able to fund otherwise. We have leaves of absence. We had 11 people, and we have eight people who have yet to let us know whether they will return next year or take another leave or resign. We know about three of them at this point, and you'll hear at the end of this presentation about a reduction in our bottom line, not a reduction of any of the things we've proposed yet, but in the bottom line. And by March 1st, we'll know about those other eight people. We had a number of requests for new roles, and that really reflects attention to increasing needs of our special populations of students. And one of the special populations is the students that have some social and emotional needs, as well as students have counseling needs and special education support and some long-proposed roles. We have two things in this budget that are new requests that have been on the list for five years. So we'll talk about those in a minute. Collective bargaining is pretty much done and all within the budget that we established. And we have one more unit that's just begun negotiating bus drivers. That will be finished up. There's a small amount in the allowance part of the budget to take care of that negotiation and also negotiation with a number of our individual contractees who we have to work with every year. Overall enrollment, pretty level for K through eight. High school continuing to rise a bit. And other growth areas, we have to comply with the verbal opioid screening aspect of the opioid prevention legislation. There's some new dollars in there for that. Not big dollars, but nevertheless, it's a mandate professional development dollars, particularly for our social and emotional programs and added special ed training and planning for new state initiatives, including a civics curriculum, computer science, and STEM changes to the Mass Common Core. So those are all things that are unique this year. And every year, there's a list like this, and some common elements, but not always. Just quick enrollment, we had hoped kindergarten enrollment would level out after we went to the full day, and you can see it hasn't leveled out yet. So we don't have a good way of predicting what is going to happen in the future years. K to 12 enrollment, you can see peaked two years ago and has dropped a little bit since then. So the key to all of this predicting and projecting is really whatever happens to kindergarten enrollment. Middle school and high school, the high school is in the blue, continuing to increase, as Liza noted. The middle school leveled off, and our biggest classes have moved through the middle school, but the ones following them are pretty much, for the next couple of years anyway, still in the 300 to 350 range. With respect to the nature of the enrollment, we have 4225 students this year in district here with us every day. We have 450 more students in the last 10 years. That's a 12% increase. Class size, elementary class size is very good, I think, well-balanced among the buildings. 20.7 average over 92 sections. Three years ago, we had 96 sections, and we were able to cut those sections when we didn't need them. 11 of the 92 are 24 or 25 students, 11 out of 92. Not a bad percentage, I think. Middle school, 1070. There are 237 core subjects, and core subjects are math, science, English, social studies, and foreign language. We don't count in those classes like phys ed and music because one would expect they would be higher anyway. But at the middle school, 26 of those are at 25 or higher, 25, 26, 27. And at the high school, 1,255 students, 332 total core subjects there. Again, the five academic subjects, and 64 of those 332 classes are at 25 or higher. We also have responsibility for students in the mandated preschool. There are 70 of them in all, kids in our school every day. Of the 70, that says 138, it is 38. Obviously, I have IEPs, and the program is designed for those students. The other students, the remaining students in the pre-K, the 32, parents pay tuition for them to attend. We have 49 students right now who are out of district, children with special needs. We're projecting that number will be 51 next year, but I've said many times, those numbers can change from day to day. So right now, it's 49, and we have four vocational students, three more, actually four, a new one yesterday, students who have applied to go from current eighth grade to a vocational school. If they get in, we would have to pay that tuition. We've budgeted for it. If they don't, then that would be a savings of a fair amount of money, more than $100,000. So that's the enrollment. We do a monthly count like this one for the enrollment, and there you can see the different sizes, the class sizes at the elementary, and obviously can't put all of those hundreds of sections on one piece of paper, so we total them up in the left and the right corners. This is the proposed budget, and right now, as you know, it's the budget that the administration has proposed to the school committee. We've had several sessions, budget sessions, over the month of January, and at this point, the school committee has not taken any action on making changes to this budget, but they will on February 26th, we hope, adopt a budget. And February 12th will be the mandated public hearing on the budget. So 6.10% increase projected overall, and you can see regular ed is in blue, 5.79%, the special ed is in green, 6.6% I think it's supposed to be, and 77.11%, that's the vocational. That sounds like a huge number, but what it means is the possibility of three more students who might get accepted at a vocational school. So it's important to look at percents, but not at everyone. When small numbers, the percents are gigantic with one change. So that's the 6.1% overall. The most important part of that for most of you here is what is new in that budget. So you have a page there, and if you got the handout at the back, on the back of that is this chart. And it lists all of the things that were requested in three columns. The things that are listed in the first column are the things that are actually embedded in the budget. The cost of those things are in the budget. And then another way of looking at that is to kind of put those things together in groups because I think it's easier to understand them. So here you can see that of the things in that first column in the blue and white sheet of those things, regular instruction accounts for 525, 393 for 7.1 teachers, 5.1 secondary, two elementary. For tutors at the elementary level, two tutors in each of the four elementary buildings. For math tuning, again, goes back to that notion that there are some kids that need more help, more instruction in math each week, and that's 245. And that's one of the things that has, this is the fifth year of that request. And you know, it just comes a point where we can't make any more progress without providing some more help. So that totals 77996, so that's 58.81% of the new items are under regular instruction. Under special education, there are three teachers there. There are some additional paraeducators requested for individual students, students with names. And then there are some liaison stipends for each of the buildings to have a liaison with central office, which we hope will facilitate and speed up communication that needs to happen. So nearly $300,000 of those new items comes from the special education department. And then things that are related to both regular instruction, in the sense of kids with social and emotional issues, for example, or special education-related kinds of services would include counselors. So we have here either an adjustment or a guidance counselor for the middle school, a high school adjustment counselor, and in both of those buildings, it would be a second adjustment counselor because of the numbers, and then some support materials for the program that we're building under our Hingham's T-Aid Systems of Support, which is the planning that we're doing for addressing needs of social and emotional students. So that's 13.25. And if you go over on the other side, there were some smaller requests. They're all listed here, small percentage of the overall request, that's 5.48%. So that's how all of those new things on the blue and white paper break down. I did send to you over the weekend a packet, and the packet included some detail about the specific positions and the specific needs that we have, and I hope that was helpful to your understanding. So the budget, if you break it down into a pie chart, the big blue chunk, 52% of the budget on the left, is regular education. The next biggest piece, the red quarter on the right, 24% of the budget, is special education. There are eight different functions in that account, in that green area on the budget chart. And then the other things are all smaller slices, but regular ed and special ed, 52% and 24%, and all the others are things like operational expenses, principals, offices, school committee expenses, the vocational budget, and so on. A few slides about special education. In this one, it shows by building the number of students with respect to the total enrollment in the building, and therefore the percentage of students in each building that have an IEP. That's fairly leveled out fairly well this year. Sometimes there may be one building that has a higher percentage or not, and sometimes it's the middle and the high school because they have all of the students where the elementary schools are only broken up into quarters. But 10.98%, and this is a member of students in the building, doesn't count the students who are in the preschool, and it doesn't count the students who are out of district. Those are noted at the bottom of that chart. We have the 51 students that we're budgeting next year for out-of-district placements, and it's a range of placements. Could be a private day school, could be a private residential school, could be a school, a public school like the Canton Hospital School, that's the SEIS category, could be another public school. We have one student in a nearby community, public school. Could be a collaborative, and 19 of our 21 collaborative students go to the social ed collab. And you can see the range of tuitions for those, and the range is great. You can see the private residential, the highest tuition for the coming year is $320,000 for one child for the one year. Student services staffing, this is a very, very large department, large for a relatively small number of adults and administrators and teachers to try to manage. You can see here in the blue, in the green, the new items that are proposed for that In the green at the very bottom, we're looking at a second skills class. This is a group of more challenged students who are moving from grade five to six. We have one skills class at the middle, we need a second one. And then also a middle school and a high school special ed teacher to allow us to do more co-teaching at both of those buildings. In the blue are two positions that we were funded last year in the summer when the needs became known. One is to make sure we can do a full-day kindergarten, a full-day preschool class of four-year-olds who need a full day. That's the .5 that says pre-K full day. And then we added a .5 teacher to foster. We had a .5 there, we added a .5. Both of those things were funded after the budget last year by IDEA, but I want them to mention them here because they weren't on this chart last year. So on the left side, you have the things under 2,300B, and that's the special ed instructional account where all the teachers are. And then there are special ed staffings in many other of the B sections of the budget. So we have the director and assistant director, we have the elementary psychologist chairs, early childhood coordinator, and so on. And then we do have some contracted services that are part-time, and many of these kinds of services could be supported by the IDEA grant. So summarizing the things that are new, either in special ed or in a function related to it, the three teachers, one skills at the middle, one co-teaching class at the middle school, and one co-teaching class at the high school. The related services there are important. Second adjustment counselor for the high school, and either a middle school counselor, a fourth counselor, or a second adjustment counselor, and it will be up to the director of counseling, Heather Rodriguez, and the principal of the building, Derek Smith, to determine, you know, as the spring moves on, which of those is going to be, provide the greatest service in the areas where we need it there. And then I mentioned before the two heft people that we added last summer and that were funded by IDEA. So this is the whole special ed account. I'm not going to read over the whole thing, but it's what is green on the sheet that you have. So you have a green sheet, you have a sheet that has the whole budget. The green section is what is up here. So overall percentage increase is 6.63%, and I won't comment on that one any further. So some general comments about the budget, and I would suggest you might want to look at the multicolor budget page as I go over this. First of all, really important, particularly for those of you who aren't accustomed to dealing with the school budget, but it's a net budget. The entire budget is a net budget. So our current preliminary request of $52,871,71, which is up 6.1% over the prior year, reflects offsets. Now, there are offsets for special education in the amount of almost $2.5 million, and they all are grants, state and federal kinds of grants. There are offsets for regular education, and that's at the bottom half of the offset sheet, which I'm going to show in a minute, and that's $1.4 million. And most of those are fees, a few grants, but fees that people may pay, for example, for the use of our property, use of our buildings or grounds. So the budget that you're seeing has been offset by 3.9, almost $4 million, and that reduces what was the gross budget, or would have been the gross budget, by the amount of 7%. Among the mandated costs that impact the budget are special education, and that's $12.6 million, up to $6.6 12.6 million, up to 6.63%, and vocational education, up 77.21%, but that represents, again, those three additional students who have applied, not yet accepted. Some of our Hingham Public Schools programs and services are funded fully by fees, tuitions, and revenues. In fact, you don't even see them ever in this budget except as an offset. And those are things like Kids in Action, before and after-school program. You don't see that in the budget, but you see the benefit of having that, of that program in our schools because they offset things like utility costs and some small custodial costs. And in a sense, they are paying us some rent. In addition, they pay their own health insurance, and, and it's a wonderful service for our, for our citizens. But you don't see it anywhere in the budget except in an offset line. Food services is along the same lines, driver education, same kind of thing, Title I. They don't appear in the budget except as a source of offsets. And then we have some programs that are partially offset by fees and tuitions, and the best examples of that would be athletics, student activities, fees, and full-day, full-day kindergarten. So this is the chart that shows those offsets. Special ed is at the top of the page, and regular education at the bottom. And you can see that the special ed budget would have been 15 million as opposed to the 12 that it is, if it weren't for that offset. And regular education would have been 41.5 as opposed to the 40,048 that it is, and you can see the reduction, the reduction there. But that's an important concept, the idea of offsets to budgets, and they're fairly significant, as you can see. Just some things about our buildings, aging infrastructure and equipment. You know, the high school, I can't believe this, but it's been nearly 20 years since we did the 32-month renovation of that building. Great renovation, great value, building has held up well, but getting older, as most things do after 20 years. And you've heard also, we have a warrant item that relates to some glass block windows over the gym that need replacement. You'll hear a lot more about that. But rooftop air handlers need replacing periodically everywhere. Boilers, we have two older boilers and we keep them running, but you know, they don't last forever. And of course, we have the need for the expanded health and wellness facilities, that's our highest priority after we get the windows fixed. For, for the high school foster, you know, all about that, I won't talk about that. Plymouth River, we still have the need for those new windows, which we think will be able to be offset partially by some money that will come to us from the Beale Street project, we hope. And South School, major roof work on the horizon, one of our oldest buildings, and good renovation again, and has held up well, and, but it will need some work. And the buildings at the depot, still not a clear decision, that's one of those things that we're, we have to work in, in concert with the, with the town to resolve some issues that they have concerns about there too. So in general, our infrastructure is strong, but it will need work. Nothing is ever done, just like in your house. Maintenance and custodial needs, there are no new positions asked for in, with respect to any of our maintenance or custodial or transportation, in fact, needs. No new personnel, operating funds or operating expenditures, up 9.3% year-over-year in that account, and again, the aging infrastructure. And you know, we're subject to inflation in, in the trades that we deal with, and HVAC, and elevators, and electrical, and plumbing, and all of those hourly rates continue to go up, and that certainly impacts our budget. And we have, in the midst of a workforce changeover, we've had a number of retirements over the last three or four years. And the good thing is that when we initially replace those people, the salaries costs go down a little bit for a little while, but then they get onto steps, which in most of our contracts, and most of the town contracts as well, there are steps of some sort along the way. So we, we see that increase, and it's changing over time. And about half of the people are on, on steps. There was one request for a custodian that we deferred, we did not put that into the budget. Facilities and operations, so this chart has electricity and heat and utilities and maintenance and custodial services, and the budget year is off to the right, and you can see that in every case, it's the custodial services, obviously, not asking for any more ones. But those are the things that tend to grow more than the others. But most of the other things are fairly level, if you just look at the chart going, going across as to what we, what we need to pay. So just FYI, but again, I want to emphasize, no big projects, nothing new in this whole category. Transportation, we're in the third year of the bus lease, so that budget is actually flat, and it's working well. We're doing our own maintenance. We actually were able to, to lease a, an additional bus that can be driven by, by a substitute that has allowed us to do more of our own athletic runs that would conflict with our regular busing schedule in the afternoon, and has saved us in that account. So that was a great plan, particularly John and Patrick, our maintenance supervisor, came up with that plan, and it's, we're thinking of perhaps doing the same thing with respect to the MEKO bus. The biggest part of the MEKO grant is spent on transportation, so if there are ways that we can save money there. So if we were to provide the transportation ourselves, that could be a good thing to do, and we are planning to take that on. So we're always looking for places where we can get a better bang for the buck or save money in transportation. So, different chart, same amount of money, this is the same $52,800,171, but the big pie there is the personnel costs. So of the budget, personnel costs account for 44,000, 44,113,584, 83.55% of the budget. Now, I want to make sure that you understand, these are personnel costs, so it's not just the costs of our staff, their salaries, it's benefits that may be related to that, it's the clerical people, it's the, the para professionals, it's not teachers and teacher salaries, it's things like we provide a benefit where we give some course reimbursement for teachers taking courses. So those dollars are in here. So personnel costs, not all people costs. And then contracts, and contracts could be things like the bus lease, contracts could be for special ed tuitions, contracts could be for any variety of other things, big and and small. So that's 7 million. And we pick those because the personnel part of the budget is pretty fixed unless you want to cut the personnel. It's not controllable otherwise. Mostly, most of the people that work for us are either in a collective bargaining contract or they're in an individual contract. And then that little tiny green slice there, which is 2.91% of the budget, is everything else. So these are the accounts that have textbooks, that have departmental supplies, and so on. So I like this chart, and I don't like it. I don't like the fact that the number is 83.55%. I do like the fact that it emphasizes how little real control we have over so many aspects of the budget. So we are still where we started in terms of the proposal, and the school committee has a lot of work to do in the next two weeks before the budget hearing and ultimately the vote to determine, you know, where we can go and what we can reduce. We are always looking for ways to reduce the bottom line because we know how, how important that is, but we're also looking for ways to reduce the bottom line without having to cut the services that we believe that we need. So we'll also watch for other things, external things that might show some changes. One of them is Title I, there's been a lot of chatter last few days about Title I, some estimates are out about what will happen next year with Title I. Title I doesn't appear in the budget anywhere, but Title I provides wonderful services for our children in literacy and in math, and at a variety of schools over the, over the years. So we're hearing that our eligibility may change in order to be eligible for the funds that we're getting this year, which was a big surprise to us, a poverty rate has got to be above 5%. And at least the preliminary estimates that we're getting are, it's dropped a little bit below 5%, so that's several hundred thousand dollars that could be at stake. Now, it won't impact the budget, but it would leave us without some services that we, that we badly need, and we won't know about that until next June. So we're watching that, and that's federal. Watching the state budget and, and what's going to happen as the governor's budget translates into the final state budget, which we may not know for a couple of months. So the town forecast has increased the amount of, that, based on the governor's budget, that is offsetting town-wide expenses, but we don't know where that will really end up. The governor's budget is only a signal as to what the legislature may be thinking. And finally, something we just found out about this week, there's a new bill, a Senate bill, 233, which just filed on January 18th. And for the first time since it was enacted, which was in 15, 2015, the Budget Review Commission, which would give substantially more dollars to cities and towns from the state, there's an actual bill proposing to enact some of what the commission put in place. And there's a lot of lobbying out there to try to get that passed. It's at the center level, and people are encouraged to write about it, but certainly we will be paying attention to that. That could be a significant help to not just Hingham but all cities and towns. And then what are we looking at in the local budget? Well, those personnel changes that I mentioned earlier, maybe some more retirements, one or two at least would help a lot, and finding out about those remaining eight folks who haven't yet told us whether they're returning next year or not. Out-of-district tuition rates, where are they going? We have estimates in the budget, but some of these schools are looking for what they call reconstruction, which would be monies, which is a higher rate than the 2 or 3% that, that most of the other special ed schools have on the, on the books. So we need to pay attention to that and see what changes are there. Electricity and other utilities, you know, they're, they're variables every year. Kindergarten enrollments, some of you've heard the chatter about the right age for internal kindergarten, we think it's five, but there are some parents who really want to hold their children out until they're six. We're trying to encourage coming at five, that is the right age, we believe, for most children. But if more children this year come at age five, that could mean we need another section of kindergarten. We've got one in the budget, it would be nice not to need it and to be able to take it out of the budget. Net enrollment across the, all of the elementary schools, numbers going up and down because we've got a, a position in that, in the budget with the thought that we have one, we need one teacher to maintain the same number of sections in, in all four of the buildings, and if we have some ins and outs that occur that we know about before the budget is closed, that could be a position that we have in that we might not need. And then the vocational school acceptances that I, that I just mentioned. So that's what we have our eyes on. So the announcement is that we have been able to keep everything that's proposed here still in the budget for now, but we have been able to realize a savings because there were some personnel changes. And they're down at the bottom of that chart. So there was an electricity adjustment, and that was a change, savings of $40,000, and that reflected that every month that goes on, we have another month of experience in knowing what, what electricity cost us last year and what we can predict for this year, and degree days and so on. So we were able to make an adjustment based upon more information about last year. And the math workshop program, that's really under professional development, so we can take that out. That was really, in a sense, counted, well, we put it in and we included it in professional development, we didn't need to put it in again. We had teacher resignation, which was unanticipated. So we believe a savings there of about $16,000, $17,000 when we predict, project what we may need to pay for a new teacher. And then we have one of the leave of absence people that we expected to come back, and we budgeted for him to come back, and sadly, in many ways, he's resigning, and so there's a savings there. So that's a total savings, and it's not a reduction. I don't want to call it a reduction, it's a reduction of the bottom line, but it's not a reduction in the budget. And so that was a total of $87,291 that we've taken off the bottom line. So bottom line, instead of being 52.8, is 52,71281, and that brings the bottom line percent down from 6.1 to 5.93. So at least not a big adjustment as our numbers go, but, but a step in the right direction, and we're happy to be able to do that. There were some questions, I think, from the advisory committee, folks who wanted to know a little bit more about our five-year history with respect to FTEs. That's what this last page is for those of you who are interested in that, and I won't read it all, but you can see what the numbers are. FTEs, full-time equivalents, and I think the question was around regular ed, but I also included the special ed so that you could see what the numbers are there as well. And I think that's the end of that. So do we make it? Close.
Dot, thank you, thank you so much. Before I open it up to my colleagues, I just, I think it's important that we acknowledge you, you shared some news the other night.
I did.
And I don't want you to feel like you're going to be walking into every meeting for the next, you know, year plus, but that was really significant news. And you announced that at the end of the 1819 school year, you'll be retiring. And I think before we start getting into any numbers about the budget, we need to acknowledge 55 years of service and commitment.
Then it'll be 56 years.
And it will be 56 years of, of service and commitment to hundreds, hundreds of thousands of children across Hingham, so we thank you for that. And I know there'll be lots of opportunities to celebrate and reminisce and, and things, and we'll, we'll obviously look forward to that. I'm going to turn it first to Karen and Paul with any questions or comments that you have on either of the presentations that we've seen this evening.
Getting one.
This is, this is the part where you guys chime in.
Yes.
Do you want to start?
Sure.
I mean, first of all, in addition to the thousands of students and faculty that Dot has influenced over the years, she's also taught me the budget process for the schools. And for sitting in your advisory committee seat over the years, it is a lot to take in, it is a budget that's much more complex than I think many of the, the townside departments. And the thoughtful way that you, I think, present the information, the visuals that you provide, and the extra sessions, tutorial sessions that you provide for all of us that don't do this on a daily basis, I think enhances our ability to analyze the budget and make a recommendation at town meetings. So I appreciate both Liza's sort of visionary slides tonight as well as the, the more concrete numbers. I've forgotten what all this looks like until, until tonight. Yeah, I, you know, I, I share with you the, sort of the frustration and the reality of the pie, the pie slide that you showed where, you know, the, the service and what you would expect that we are spending our money on is our, you know, our faculty and staff. Those are the, that's how we provide the product that we provide to our students. And the, the cost of that, and sometimes the unpredictability of that as a, as a budget driver, I think is something that we are, we all struggle with. You know, I need to spend some time, I think, with, with both the conceptual slides and with the numbers. You know, I know, I know Mary said this, I, I think she'll say it again, you know, we've gone through, and I think advisory's gone through, the townside budgets really staying at a level service at a level services budget. You know, we said, we said last year and earlier in this budget cycle that, you know, we're in a situation as sort of the, you know, overall umbrella group to manage really flattened resources. So it's never happy, I think, to be in a situation where the townside or schoolside, you find it difficult to, I think, to really address the budgetary concerns of each and every department. But we do do our best. I think we are thoughtful about that. And, you know, it's going to take me a little while to, I think, come up to speed on these particular numbers.
I think it's fitting that you're in this room tonight because I first met you when you taught math as a teacher here.
In this building.
When I was in junior high. And I've listened to your explanations of the budget with great interest in the years that I've sat as a selectman. And I rely on the school committee with respect to the budget because it would be impossible for me to wrap myself around the needs that you've articulated. And I looked at the explanation that you provided with respect to these different positions before I came in tonight. But I also know that the town doesn't have a money tree out back, and I'm determined to make the decisions I do in a way that respects that reality. We have stagnant growth revenues, notwithstanding what's going on in the shipyard in Beale Street. South Hingham is dead in the water. So I'm trying to figure out where money is going to be coming in. Mary gave an excellent presentation last week that spoke to the kind of financial pressure that we as a town have to contend with. So I realize I can rely on my fellow classmate Lucy Newell Hancock to kind of ask the hard -- Lucy and I are in the class of 74. I think the, oh, sorry.
Lucy was young, though.
Yeah. I guess the point is, you know, I'm from the public school system. I'm a grad, all my children have graduated from the Hingham School System, so I have a lot of pride in that. But I'm in a role, I think, that really speaks to speaking plainly about spending money. And decisions I make with respect to the people's money are done carefully. So, I mean, like tonight, I want to look at that foster school material carefully. I have questions in my mind. I saw some things here, too. But that's where I am, folks. I'm not interested in operational overrides. I'm not interested in tax increases. I'm extremely sensitive to the financial pressure that many households in this town have in order to be able to just continue living here. I know they want a good school education for their children. Everybody does. So that's the perspective that I come from when I listen to the presentation. And I have great respect for your accomplishments and your service to the town. I say that sincerely.
Well, I've always said, whenever I've been up here, that, you know, we all have our jobs to do, but they're different. So your job is to look at the resources and what revenues are available, what resources are available. And the advisory committee has a different job, and their job is to determine how to allocate what both of your groups determine is available revenue and how best to spend it across the town. And I think the school committee job is to present a budget to you that reflects what we need. Our job is to recommend such a budget to them. And so I am never going to be shy about telling you what I think we need. Never am I going to be shy about that. On the other hand, we know that whatever money is allocated will be fair with respect to what is available, number one, and number two, that we will spend it in the best way we can. And I think the only time we ever get in trouble in a town like this is when we interfere in other people's jobs. So everybody does their job, you know, what will be, will be. And we'll live to see another day, so to speak. And I have one more budget that I will have to do. But we shouldn't be embarrassed, any of us shouldn't be embarrassed about doing the job that we are supposed to be doing, so.
I appreciate you saying that.
Paul, I'd just like to add that last week, we had a educational forum. We had questions from parents. And we lay this information out there, too, to them that, yes, we, this is what we see for our town and for our schools, but if the resources aren't there, that's why we're not doing things in the schools that people are asking for. And so that's why we're sharing all this information. And that's why we wanted to give the broad overview, this is what's on our plate, and these are the challenges. And we can only do them if we have the resources to do them. But if we're not doing them, that's one of the reasons we're not doing them. But we will try to be creative and make things work with as many resources as we have, which is also why we didn't assign a dollar number to things. But we need to communicate to everyone and share what's happening. So that's, so we hear you, too.
We're doing the same thing, be honest with you. And, I mean, you know, I think in the past several months, we've laid out pretty clearly some of the infrastructure capital projects that we're facing. And, you know, it's, I don't want this to be a collision, but there's got to be a balance here because I think that the public appetite for a large tax increase is not high.
But to your point, Dot, I do think that, because I was reflecting on this as well when I knew this discussion was coming up, you know, any one of the departments that comes in here, including the school department, they're the advocates and the fiduciaries for their particular part of the operation of town. And then, you know, fortunately, we have a 15-person advisory committee, as well as your three board of selectmen, that are then, you know, the arbiters of that. You know, our job is to balance, to create an overall balance. But no, I, you know, the expectation is that you will all advocate for the dollars that you need, the fire department, the police department, the schools. But then we need to synthesize that information with our advisory committee colleagues to balance that for the town.
So Dot, thank you so much for the presentation. And, you know, you talked about roles, and I agree with Karen that every department has a responsibility to say, you know, kind of, this is what we're looking for. And I, you know, I talk about everybody having roles, and I say, you know, everybody's got a lane. And everybody, I think our government works best when everybody stays in their lane. And I think one of those lanes is that the school administration and the school committee jointly decide where the dollars are spent. And I know that's a frustration for some people, but that's the lane. That's the lane that you're in. And we all play different parts. With that in mind, because I've spent a lot of time, I've been combing through all this information, I've been, you know, trying to do some analysis on my own, just to get my arms around the budget. And I'm not going to, I'm not going to kind of get into the weeds on that stuff because that's not my lane. What I would just kind of ask you to do offline, just if you could, is, and I ask every year, so I don't think it's a big surprise, but, you know, I'd ask you to take a look at the revolving funds. Those are a source of revenue. In particular, if you have a balance that's more than, in my opinion, two and a half times what you intend on spending next year, that either says we're collecting too much money or we're not applying enough. And, you know, so I just might take a look at that. It's one thing that you folks always look at. The other thing that, you know, as I was looking at some of those, I kind of wondered, I know that, you know, we're talking about, we have an important repair to do at the high school. I haven't really heard the update, but I would sort of just ask the question whether it would be appropriate for some of these revolving funds to be applied to that one-time repair. I don't know the answer. I would appreciate, you know, I'd appreciate you looking at it. I'd also ask you to just, you know, the utility thing is still puzzling to me because we had a 30 percent reduction in electric rates. And if you look at the electric rates and the electricity budgets in, you know, the fire department or in town hall, you see a bar, a bar, a bar, and then it goes down. And I'm still not seeing that in your budget. And John, I appreciate all the information. It was an awful lot to process, and I appreciate that. I just, I'm not seeing a bar dropping down to reflect about a 30 percent, a 30 percent decline, and so I'd throw that out there. I guess for me, what this budget is netting down to, and kind of is the liaison, is I tried to sort of take a step back, and I was looking at three-year and five-years and 10-years because I've been, I've been involved in the education budget for about that long. And so I'm just going to give you some statistics, just some information. I was just kind of looking at a couple of things to try to get my arms around it because it's a big increase every year. It's a $3 million increase this year. You know, so I'm trying to get my arms around it. In the last three years, enrollments changed by seven. The education budget's gone up by $6 million, which is 14 percent, and we've added about 26 people. So that's kind of in three years. In five years, the enrollment's grown by 88. The budget's grown by about 10 million, and we've added about 50 people. And if I look in 10 years, and you've pointed out that the population has grown by, you know, 500 students, but the education budget in that time's grown by 49 percent. So, you know, the part that I'm trying to kind of get my arms around is that in the last three to five years in particular, the enrollment growth has slowed down. But each year, it seems like the budget is growing by about $2 million. And, you know, if I think back to right after East School opened, a lot of that was restoring positions that, or establishing positions that were intended to realize the vision. And I remember being on advisory and really fighting hard for those to say, this is what was the master plan. We're going to have a gym teacher in every school. We're going to have an art teacher in every school. We're going to have an assistant principal in every school because we tried it the other way, and it really didn't work. And I just felt like in those couple of years, we were asking for these big asks because we were kind of clawing our way out. But what I've seen since then is that the, while the enrollment has dropped off, the level of increase keeps going up. And in my head, I'm trying to figure out how to process that. And I'm thinking about, you know, there's been a lot of talk lately about per pupil. And, you know, if I think about the enrollment over the last five years and the spending increase, I feel like we're putting more resources against the student population. And so when there's a $3 million request and a lot of it is personnel-driven, I'm just trying to rationalize that with, you know, kind of a flat enrollment. I realize it's a long question.
Let me raise that.
No, I realize it's a long question. I thank you for listening, but I'm hoping you can help dimensionalize that a little bit.
Yes. I'm glad you mentioned the fact that you were talking about dollars and enrollment. And I have said more in the last 10 years and shorter than that than ever. It is not just about enrollment. We don't have the same student population we had a number of years ago. We don't have more children with special needs. That has remained fairly level, although maybe seven or eight years ago, we had a time when we were budgeting 40, excuse me, 65 students for out-of-district placement. And the last two or three years, that's been pretty level. Thanks a lot to Liz Curl for managing that. But we don't have the same population. In addition to our children with special needs, we have 223 children with 504 plans. Now, they don't get specific paraeducators assigned to them necessarily or out-of-district, but it's a large number of students who do have disabilities of one sort or another. This whole social, emotional issue is shocking, and it's across the country. It's not just here. We have kids that need help, and that's adjustment counselors. And that's the task force that Jamie is running this year and the survey that we've done. And we're just beginning to find out what else we need to put in place for those children. And I don't like to single out special education, certainly. I think kids that are out of district here are there because they need to be, and they're in the right place, and they're, and most of them have needs that we couldn't serve here. But when a million-two, a million-two of the 3 million you mentioned takes care of five students, that's impactful. And it isn't the fault of the families, the children, of us, or bad budgeting, or any of those things. In my mind, it is that severe challenges like that need to be taken care of by our state and/or our federal government, and that is not happening. And so the bill falls on individual communities where these things occur. But $1 million out of the 3 million, that's significant. And that, and those are issues that most of the other town departments don't have as well. But it's not about more children. You're right. We're just about leveling off. It is about children that have more significant needs than we've ever had before.
I'm just a little confused on the 1 million that you referenced.
Okay. So out-of-district tuitions, if you look at the page.
Yep. It looks like it's about 3.13 million, about the same as last year?
Yes. But remember, that's offset by the circuit breaker dollars we get back always offset that particular section of the special ed budget. But the costs that we have, if you were to look at the chart that has all of those individual tuitions on it, they were up five tuitions. The total over a million dollars, there's one that's 320, and there are four that are in the $200,000 range, $300,000 range, so. But it doesn't show up because of the net budget and the fact that the 1.291 that comes from circuit breaker reimbursement is all off that one line in the special ed budget.
Yeah. It also looks like, if you look at sort of the year-over-year, that 2,300 line for teaching, which we might expect is such a big, big part of the budget, that that's where, that's where the greatest year-over-year increase seems to be.
Right. I can't deny that at all.
Yeah. Okay.
We did have a contract year of 0 percent. And then we hit, so that 10-year period, that 10-year, 10 years ago, was the bottom, and there was a lot cut back at that time. And there were two years of federal supplements. And so then, and we added another school, plus then we rebuilt the middle school. So there were additional things that happened during that time period. And then the bubble of the enrollment is going from elementary to secondary. And so there are different types of teaching and costs involved in a secondary level to an elementary level. So there, I mean, we have to look at this and respond better, but, you know, the town budget has also, hasn't that gone up that much by, in the 10 years? The schools are 50 percent, so.
I don't, I don't think quite as fast, but I don't, but I'm not exactly sure right now. I'm looking at, you know, for me, it's more the kind of enrollment piece, you know, because, you know, I think, I understand that enrollment drives a lot of the pieces. And I think some of your comments about some of the complexities and some of the changes in your student demographics, that's kind of helpful in understanding, you know, in understanding what's taking place. So, thank you. Lucy, did members of the advisory committee?
Well, we've seen these numbers several times. They're scary, and we don't want to see that, but we know what the reasons are. And I think my concern is we have less than four weeks to get a balanced budget, and we have to figure out how to do it in conjunction with the school department, the school committee, the board of selectmen, our education liaisons, and the rest of the advisory committee. So you know what the schedule's like. We're going to come down to three days in March when we're going to have to do all of this because everything's going to come together in a short amount of time. So I So, I don't have specific questions, but I would turn to the education liaisons and the other folks in the advisory committee to see if they have questions. So, I open it up to you. And if you're going to speak, please come to the mic. Don't be shy.
And I know you're having another hearing.
We will have the education liaisons presenting to us on the twenty-seventh, which is the day after the school committee is scheduled to vote, I think, on the twenty-sixth on the budget. Is that correct?
Yep.
And then, we only have so many days before the warrant has to go to press, so, which includes Article Six. So, I suspect that March first, third, sixth, seventh, eighth, somewhere in that range, we're going to be looking at all of this very closely. In addition to prior to that, but as I said, we can't act on it until we have a lot of other pieces, not just from you.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the, in the audience who had a question or wished to make a comment at this time? Jim, could you come up to the mic, please?
Jim Watson, two-ninety-one Rockland Street. Congratulations, Dot, on the many years of teaching and administering. I mean, two different skills, but you've done an amazing job, and I'm just astonished every year at your command of it all. I'm just wondering, is it possible, within available resources, to do more with early, with language education in the early grades, maybe by reallocating some of the senior, the high school language teaching hours to the early grades? Or is that being done?
Actually, over the last several years, the high school is growing, so, you know, we need those teaching hours there, so.
You keep hearing about how kids learn more. I know how little I learned at high school language classes, and I keep thinking, maybe what you hear about the early years being much better for language acquisition, if there's some way to do it within the overall budget.
Well, you know, everything's balanced, and the elementary level has, has that amount in there for the tutors that are very important to them. That's significant funding. We added a number of positions. If you look at that chart, that last page that I put there, you see a bump up of the year that we started the full-day kindergarten, and we added staffing then. We added, you see that in both the regular ed line and the special ed line, we added, it was between seven and eight teachers and powers as well. So, that was a big hit, eight-hundred-plus-thousand dollars.
Including some language instruction?
Excuse me?
Is that including some language, foreign language instruction?
Well, the foreign language had been put in place earlier than that, but we picked up foreign language for the kindergarteners.
Oh, good.
But that wasn't a whole teacher. It was a piece of a teacher, because those children have foreign language only once in a six-day cycle.
Okay, thanks. Just good to hear.
We added, we added the kindergarten piece, but the rest of the elementary had been there for a few years.
It's just an amazing juggler to do all the things that you're handling. Thank you.
A lot of balls in the air, is what I was, a lot of balls in the air.
All right.
Jim, just to clarify your question, we do have Spanish language for kindergarten through fifth graders.
Really?
And then, in the middle school, students can pick either French or Spanish. And then, when they get to the high school, they can continue with those languages. And many Spanish students who are taking, we offer two AP, I believe it's two AP Spanish classes, but in the high school, there's four languages offered: French, Spanish, Mandarin, Chinese, and Latin.
That's amazing.
And there aren't, you know, we're fortunate that we can offer the elementary program, and we're fortunate that we can offer two languages in the middle school. So, we do have a foreign language program in the elementary.
And some of the early years, too.
Yes.
Good. Thank you.
Bob, did you have a question or comment?
I had a question.
Introduce yourself.
Bob Curly, one Chris Millane Advisory Committee. I will say thank you initially for your years of extraordinary service, Dot. And the question I had was, I know last year, looking at the budgets, we saw that there was a relatively large amount of money from budgeted funds that was unspent within the budgets. And I wondered if you could quantify, maybe, what the amount of unspent funds was, if any, from the budgeted funds to the school department for last year? And whether you would anticipate that you would likely see the same kind of performance this year?
Well, we hope for that, we hope for that, but we don't budget for it. In other words, we do not budget monies that we might not need. We don't. We budget people, and we know who they are. Or, we have a vacancy, and we budget elementary positions for a master's Step Three, and hope that that will get us through, and it usually does, or for secondary master's West Five. But we do end up with savings, and they tend to be in one of three places: personnel changeover during the year, maternity leaves, people who leave, our hiring season in the fall that turns out a little bit better than we thought it would, utilities that go up and down, and sometimes have excesses. And the last category is, is special education, where there are changes during the year. Almost any day that can happen. But we never budget. When we budget these tuitions, they are not extra tuitions. Every tuition that is in that budget has initials next to it, for what we know now, that can change. And we budget what we realistically think we need. And I always remember, just to mention Ted Alexiatus, because we would joke back and forth sometimes about, you know, we have to conservative, budget conservatively, and the earlier you have to set a budget, the more conservative you have to be, because you can't put back something you've cut. So, we like these later votes, but we are always hoping for changes that will allow us not to have to reduce some things. We have a list of things. John and I usually have a list of the things that are the highest priority we would recommend, of course, the school committee makes the votes. But we always have the list of, if this, this amount changes, this is what we would designate the money should go for. But it's not speculative budgeting at all. It's conservative. We budget, we never would say, for example, oh, I know I'm way low here, you know, and I'll just hope for the best. We never do that. We budget what we think we need, at the cost we think we can get it. And we have never had to come to the advisory committee. I'm very proud of this, since I've had a big part in so many budgets. We've never come to the advisory committee to say, at the end of the year, you know what? We need more, we need more money. We have never had to do that. Now, we've had excesses sometimes at the end of the year, and, you know, the town benefits from getting those dollars back. We don't just go out and spend them on things that we never thought we needed. So, it is conservative budgeting. I would never say it's not, but it's not made-up numbers either. So, we're always hoping that something will come back.
I understand the budget process and the fact that you have to look forward and plan for what might happen. I was just interested in the historic data or a range.
Well, John would have to tell you those numbers. I don't, I don't remember the numbers from last year.
Maybe.
They were close. They weren't, it wasn't a lot last year. It was close.
Maybe as, maybe as a follow-up, if that, if that's, is there anyone else, any other? Yes, please. Could you come up and identify yourself?
Yes, I'm Katie Goggan. I'm the chair of the Hingham Special Education Parents Advisory Committee. And I also want to thank the school committee and school administration for working so hard on this budget. And also, just to underscore Dr. Gallo's point, that the needs of our current children in special education are really complex and are growing more complex all the time. And we've consistently heard that from parents and heard from teachers and administrations that children's individual education plans, which is the federally mandated document for the services they require, are getting more intense and more complex. And, you know, the special education community is also really appreciative of all the work that's been done on the Hingham-tiered system of support, which is where you see the line items in the budget around the adjustment counselors. And one thing that parents have really been talking about is that nationally, the recommended ratio for counselors to students is about one to two-hundred-and-fifty, and this is by the National School Education Counselor Association. I think the national average is one to five-hundred. And at the Hingham Middle School, I think we're at about one to eleven-hundred. People over here know that better, and I think it's even greater in the high school. And so, there's a real, there's a real need for those positions, and I hear the concern about adding staff, but this is a real concern in the community now. So, I just wanted to share that.
Thank you.
I would just say, I certainly support Katie's comments about counselors are important, particularly adjustment counselors. The numbers at the high school are one to two-seventy-five, I'm going to say. The middle school, we have three guidance counselors, three counselors, and we have eleven-hundred kids, so it's three-twenty-five, something in that neighborhood. So.
Question. Adjustment counselors distinct from a guidance counselor?
Yes. Adjustment counselors are usually social worker licenses.
Okay.
And to add to what Katie was saying, that students with IEPs do have adjustment counselor hour, or time in their IEPs, and then we only have the one adjustment counselor in each, the middle school and the high school. So, those adjustment counselors have to spend time with the students with the IEP. So, it's even less time that they're available to spend to the rest of the regular population. And that's another reason why they're getting very stretched and very thin, and as the high school population grows, that time gets less and less for the regular students who are facing more challenges. I would also like to add that the school committee will be having a public hearing on the budget for anyone that would like to come comment at our meeting on February twelfth, on Monday. So, please, anyone at home or here who would like to share your thoughts on what you, what's a priority for you, we'd love to have you come to our meeting and hear from you.
Final question. Are you saying that the, there are students in the population that aren't being served because the adjustment counselors are tied down with the special education kids?
Um, yeah.
How do you quantify that? How do you show that? I guess I'm just a lot, I read that in your material, and I just.
I think what's, what's happened over the years is that as the social-emotional needs have increased for everybody, that's not unique to children with disabilities, that's part of our general population now. But as more and more students with special needs have individual kinds of services provided by the adjustment counselor, the adjustment counselor doesn't have as much time to do the things with the general population, what we would call tier-one services, as they, as they did before. So, and this HTSS stands for Hingham Tiered Systems of Support. So, we think that all children benefit from some social-emotional services, and that all children need base-level instruction, formal instruction sometimes, support groups for short-term kinds of disabilities, tier-one needs. And then, some children need a bit more, more individualized or group work, and some children need some pretty intense work with the adjustment counselor. So, we're working on a formal plan for that, but we can't do it in middle school or high school in particular with one counselor, because that's where the ratio, it's the adjustment counselor, Katie, that's where those ratios are. One adjustment counselor and eleven-hundred kids in the middle school, one adjustment counselor and twelve-hundred kids in the high school. And so, what's getting left behind is enough time to do those, in some cases, preventive kinds of services, the actual formal instruction, that adjustment counselors used to do and simply can't do with the numbers that we have.
And I would just point out that an IEP is a contractual legal binding document. It is, it is an agreement between the school department on behalf of the town and parents, and it is very specific as to services that'll be provided, when they will be provided, the frequency of their being provided. So, if you're an adjustment counselor, you know, that, those, you have to carry those commitments out, and what's happening is that that's not leaving a lot of time for other, other, other issues that may come up with students. And I think what Dot's saying is that unfortunately, we have a circumstance where there are more kids coming to school with social-emotional issues than there used to be. And, and you have adjustment counselors who have limited amounts of time in which to interact and help work with those students.
I think there was a chart in the materials that I sent yesterday that had, or Saturday, and that there was a chart about adjustment counselors in some of the area towns, not all of our benchmark towns, but some of them. And you can see that many of those schools, many of those towns in their high schools have two, three, even more adjustment counselors.
You know, this, this might be kind of a, a good, a good place and time to, to wrap up. And before I conclude, I just, you know, we've been talking about some different dates and different processes, so just share, share a few more dates, because if members in the audience want to come to town hall every night for the next couple of weeks, there are at least two or three. We got something for you. So, the, the Board of Selectmen are going to be making our recommended budget votes on Tuesday, February twenty-seventh. And I stress that that's the word "recommendation," because our colleagues on the advisory committee, actually, when they vote the budgets, that is what appears in the town warrant. And so, you know, we will be going through that. I think right now, we have, it's about a two-point-seven-million-dollar deficit, a little bigger than we've usually had at this time in the year. There's some information that's coming through. The thing we're going to pay the most attention to is what's going to be happening with health insurance. And the Group Insurance Commission, the GIC, the next time their meeting is Friday, February twenty-second, so we anticipate that they will be sharing some news about, about plans and things. We, we are hopeful to get a sense of the rates. As Dot said, just like there's news that comes into the school department, you know, in the April and May timeframe, the enrollment for the GIC is not really until April. So, we may, you know, we, we are hoping to have the information we need to reflect that in our financials, but that's a little bit, that's a little bit out of our control. What, what the Board of Selectmen will be doing over the next couple of weeks is, I've asked our interim town administrator, Tom Mayo, with the assistance of Sue Nickerson, to go through and prioritize the municipal additional requests that are reflected in the budget. So, you know, our, my thought here is that while certainly Karen and Paul, we have opinions about that, I think particularly in tough times, I want to know, Tom, from you, which of these requests you think are most important for the town, understanding that there may not be the capacity to, to, to fund all of them, potentially even the capacity, you know, for, to, to fund any of them. And again, we think that that will inform our advisory, our advisory committee colleagues. And, you know, since the advisory committee's in here, and this is the last time we'll see you, you know, we would just ask, as you're, you know, as you're looking at the budget, to the extent that you're able to look at additional requests, we'd ask you to please use the guidance of the town administrator. We also have to hear capital outlay. I think we're hearing that next week. So, as Lucy said, there's a lot to do in a short period of time. And every year, the task feels a little bit daunting, but we're working together. We typically go into town meeting together with recommendations that we can all get around, and that's obviously, that's obviously the goal for this year. So, I don't know if anybody else?
Just to, just to put an emphasis on that point, Mary, Lucy and Donna and I meet weekly, as you know, to try to understand the issues of the week, sometimes of the hour or the minute. And so, we're on top of that. I'm available, as all of the AdCom liaisons know, myself and my staff, as needed. Sue Nickerson is available, and she goes to all your meetings. So, as you need, as you need information or guidance, please don't, don't, don't hesitate.
And I'd add, I'd add just one other date. Again, we are anticipating that we will have news from the GIC on February twenty-second, so we have sent out a meeting request for a forecast group update on Monday, the twenty-sixth. So, the hope would be that as we start to enter that week or two-week period where people are voting budgets, the forecast is as current as it possibly can be at that time. So, that, that is, that is the plan.
What's the insight into the governor's?
What's the insight into the governor's budget or the, the sort of state legislative action at that point? Do we get any update from our delegation on those numbers?
So actually, our delegation is coming in next week.
Okay.
To our meeting. And one of the, one of the reasons we time it around then is, is to see if they have a sense of things. And Tom with his colleagues, you know, they, they sort of chat about what are, what are you doing? It's not clear to me if the Senate or the House will have come out with a budget proposal at that time. I know Liza sent us some articles that would suggest that the Senate and the House kind of feel like the Chapter 70 money, reflecting in the governor's budget, wasn't as high as they expected. So right now, we've got the governor's budget in there. We hope that number won't go lower. And then, again, depending on the timing and the information, you know, we, we all want to be really careful that we don't plan on expenses not to happen and have them happen, or plan on revenue coming in that doesn't happen. So I think one of the, one of the reasons we're AAA bond community is thanks to all the great work of everybody here in terms of, of a conservative approach to budgeting. We, we don't get very many surprises, and I think that's a, that's a credit to, to all of us collectively. So logistically, are the, we have, I think, just a couple more minutes of business to conclude.
Need to adjourn?
Lucy, do you, Lucy and Liza, do you need to adjourn?
Yeah, I guess we, yeah. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
And I'll take a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
We've got, everybody, if I could ask you to, as you're, to take the conversations out into the hall, just so that as we conclude our meeting, the viewing audience can hear that. Thank you.
Copy, give me, and I'll bring you a copy on what.
We've got selectmen and town, we've had Tom's report, town administrator. Karen or Paul, any items for the selectmen's report?
Yeah, I got one thing, but just want to wait till the crowd clears. Reflection.
Forty years ago tonight, I was a young patrolman, and I was going out into the street, and it was unlike a night I ever had. It was the blizzard of '78.
Oh, my goodness.
And.
That's amazing.
At the time, we shared the radio frequencies with the towns of Holland City. So we got to hear.
Wow.
What was going on, you know, out there on, on those coastal communities. And it was, it was a bleak night, one that I'll never forget, ever. I, I'm happy to say that, you know, our ability to respond to a major weather event is, is much greater, but that, that whole week after that literally paralyzed the town. And, you know, some people are sentimental about it, but, but that was a storm that killed people around here, so.
Thank you.
You bet.
Karen?
So I, I feel like, I feel like I'm the sportscaster of the group, so I've got, I've got two sporty shout-outs. One, I want to congratulate Bee Raymond, Donna Driscoll, and Heidi Russell for organizing the Stormtrooper Challenge again this January. Over, well over 100 people participated, many of them right here in Hingham. The challenge is, you had to go outside and walk or run at least a mile every single day in January. You missed a day, you were out. The Cracker Barrel provided free coffee to people who were walking by and could stop in and get a refreshment. It's a great community builder, and it was a great way to make yourself get outside in the month of January. I did it, Mary did it. I don't know about you, Mary, but when, when the calendar hit February, I was like, well, I'm in with my, my cozy sweatshirt on, and that was that. But really, thanks Bee, Donna, and Heidi. It was a great community event. And my other sporty announcement is that Alice Meriwether of Hingham, Massachusetts is, has made the U.S. Olympic ski team. So she will be joining her colleagues in South Korea, competing under our flag, and we wish her and her family the best.
Dress warm.
I have just two things. The first one, I guess it's kind of on the sporty theme, but Karen and I had the opportunity Friday night. It was Veterans Appreciation Night at the Hingham Varsity Girls Basketball. And the basketball boosters donated proceeds from the gate to the residents at the Commander Paul Anderson home. And it was particularly significant because Commander Anderson's niece is one of the captains of the Hingham High School basketball team. It was a very special night, and I was really struck as the veterans stood and the audience greeted them. I really appreciated that both the Hingham and the Duxbury teams paused, honored the veterans, and it was, it was just really a terrific community night.
And Keith said, like, over $300, they raised over $300?
I thought.
And then it was matched by the boosters? So it was like up to $500 in support of the Commander Paul Anderson house?
And the girls, it was a hard-fought battle. They went down in overtime, but really, just a terrific night. And lastly, I would just remind everybody that this Saturday is Lincoln Day.
Yes.
And one of Paul Healy's favorite days of the year. And we will be gathering at, at Old Ship at both, at 10:15. The ceremony will start at 11:00.
We see you at 11:00.
We'll see you at 11:00. We will process over to the Lincoln statue, and it's just always really a great day, and we would encourage everybody to be there and hope, hope to see people.
Fantastic.
Tom, was there anything else to add?
I just wanted to point out that I'm happy that there's no other sports updates you guys are giving.
There's always next week.
With that, our board will be meeting on next Tuesday night, on the 13th, and so with that, I take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Good night, everybody. Thank you.